I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Ah, Vice Chair Gordon, come on down. Like The Price is Right. Sorry, I didn't see you out there. All right, well, welcome, everybody, to the Orange County School Board. We are so pleased to have you with us tonight. This is one of our last meetings before we, uh, we don't really break for the summer, but before we have about a three or four week hiatus here. Tonight, I'm very, very excited. We're recognizing some very special scholars this evening. We are recognizing our 2013, 2014 Sunshine State Scholars and nominees from across our district. The Sunshine State Scholars Program recognizes the success of Florida's highest achieving students in the STEM subjects, which of course is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Students who are juniors this past school year were eligible for the recognition, and tonight they are here with us in the room. Please stand when I call your name and remain standing. And members of the audience aboard, if you could hold your applause till I say all their names, and then we'll give them a hearty round of applause. The nominees for 2014 who are with us tonight are Joy Brown, East River High School, Lindsay Sabastin, Apopka High School, and Lindsay, I hope I said that right, Vijay Mirage, Colonial High School, John Thompson, Oak Ridge High School, Ketsia John Charles, Ketsia, I hope I said that right as well, Jordan Kidd, oh, Ketsia is from Jones High School, by the way, congratulations, Jordan Kidd from Lake Nona High School, and Haley Brooks from Timber Creek High School. And then we have two more. These are two scholars, the next two names I'm about to announce, who were chosen by the state of Florida to represent Orange County Public Schools at the state event, and that is Matthew Schinner from Boone High School, Matthew, and Daniela Castro from Winter Park High School. Let's give a hearty round of applause. And I would also like to have and stay standing y'all for a moment. Behind these wonderful scholars are some wonderful principals. Can I have our principals also standing and allow us to recognize you from each of the high schools announced? And the assistant principals. Valerie, what are you doing way back there? And behind, stay standing, not gonna let you sit now, power the chair. And behind every great student is a wonderful home environment that encourages and recognizes the importance of a highly rigorous, high-quality education. We have some wonderful parents and relatives here tonight. Can I have the parents and relatives of all of our Sunshine State Scholars? Please stand and allow us to recognize you as well. Thank you, you all may be seated. We're so very, very proud of you. And if I could call up to the podium, Danielle and Matthew are two state representatives, and they are going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Daniela and Matthew, Daniela Castro from Winter Park High and Matthew Schinner from Boone High School. They're sort of rivals, so sort of get along up there, guys. Mild rivals.
Pledge allegiance? Please stand up, sorry. Do we have a moment of silence?
And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Y'all may be seated, thank you.
Thank you, Daniela and Matthew, nice job. All right, and let me now welcome to the podium somebody well-known to all of us up here, at least our Chief Academic Officer Scott Fritz and our Senior Administrator for Secondary Math and Science, Lisa Tyndall. Ms. Tyndall and Dr. Fritz, welcome.
Thank you. Well, let me just point out how significant an event this is. This is a wonderful way to end a great school year. These students are the highest performing students we have in the area of our STEM fields for their 11th grade, all the 11th grade students for 13, 14, which I think deserves a great round of applause. Now, just to be considered for the Sunshine State Scholars, they must have a weighted GPA of at least a 3.9. All of these students have exceeded that minimum requirement. In addition, every student sitting here has taken advanced placement courses and earned fours and fives on the advanced placement exams. And for these students, they were nominated based on a video presentation that they did, and after that presentation, they had to go through an interview with a committee. And from that, two of our students were actually selected as the scholars and one for the alternative. And those students, the two scholars, actually got to go to a state meeting and meet with the university leaders, college leaders, and industry leaders in STEM and have conversations with them about their future careers. Their families were able to accompany them, as well as a teacher. Mr. Chairman, it is my pleasure to tell you that we have our brightest right here with us for our next grade, 12th graders for next year. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. If you and Ms. Tyndall could both please step to the front of the podium. We are going to have a medal presentation ceremony, board members. And what I'm going to do, students, is I will call your name, and as I call your name, please step forward to receive your medal from Mr. Fritz and Ms. Tyndall. And then after they place the medal around your neck, you will also receive a plaque denoting your accomplishments. And then after you get the medal around your neck, the board members would like to shake your hands. So after you receive the medal, just sort of file down in front of the board table and board members, I will be presenting them with a certificate, and we will shake their hands, all right? So our first honoree tonight again is Joy Brown. Joy, where are you? There she is. And Joy is, of course, from East River High School. Again, congratulations, Joy. I think that my favorite part of this, Mr. Fritz, is the look of pride on the face of the principals. Our next, and the parents, is Lindsay Sabastin from Apopka High School. Our next honoree is Vijay Mirage from Colonial High School. Our next honoree is John Thompson from Oak Ridge High School. Our next honoree is Ketsia John Charles from Jones High School. Ketsia? It does. Our next is Jordan Kidd from Lake Nona High School. And I don't recall, was Haley here from Timber Creek High School? I don't think she was. Let's give a joint round of applause for both Jordan, again, and Haley. Haley Brooks was from Timber Creek High School. She could not make it tonight. And our next is, of course, Matthew Schinner from Boone High School. One more applause for Matthew. Congratulations. And Matthew, Dr. McMillan got held up in a little bit of emergency on their way here, so... Oh, she's here, Dr. McMillan. Recognize her, welcome. And last, but certainly not least, Daniela Castro from Winter Park High School. All right, folks, let's give one more round of applause for all of our Sunshine State Scholars. And scholars and students, usually at this time, I say it's a school night, so you're welcome to leave if you'd like to at this point. It's not a school night, you're still welcome to leave, because it is summer. Go have fun.
Mr. Sublet?
Yes.
I just wanted to say is I like the mix of male and female. Yeah, that's great.
And I like the diversity.
I do too.
Unitary status.
Dr. Jenkins, our board members, where were we the other day? Where, was that the board function? Was that something the other day? Oh, no, no, okay, never mind.
Where were you?
I'll tell you where I was, if I can just, I blew my cover now. It was at the Blankner eighth grade graduation ceremony, and they recognized students who had never received anything but an A throughout their Blankner middle school career. And they brought up 13 kids, and not a single one of them was a male. All 13 were females. Well, you know what? That's exactly what my wife said. What does that tell you? So, and it was striking, because there were 13 of them up there, not a single boy. Exactly. You're just humoring us. Oh, yeah, I have, believe me. And it's only gonna get worse. But I'm sort of digging it. All right. You know, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Flynn to make a recognition of a very special young person out in our audience tonight. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you. We have a student from Colonial High School who is working on his Eagle Scout award, so Angel Zania? Is it, where do you? Oh, did he leave?
Still here.
He might have left with the students. Well, anyway, we wanted to recognize him, but is there any other scouts here tonight? Because I thought I was, okay. But you know, they do have a unit, as you well know, that they have to go to, I guess, a government meeting, and I told them that I would answer some questions for him as well, so...
Oh, thank you, thank you. Well, and board members, I think many of y'all know this, but one of the requirements of the citizenship and the community merit badge is to attend a local government meeting, and that's a requirement. That's one of the, I can never remember anymore, eight merit badges that you're required to have of the 24, but that's a requirement one, to get your Eagle Scout. So that's why we get to see them on occasion. Plus, it's a price they have to pay for being an Eagle. Does he come back yet? There he is, come on in.
Angel, I just wanted to recognize you, that you were here attending a local government meeting and that you were working on your Eagle Scout. So we like to do that for when we have our scouts in attendance, so it's good to have you here.
All right. We are now going to go a little bit off script again. I have a special presentation I get to make tonight. We have a board member who is, we are going to recognize tonight with her tenure pin, her tenures of dedicated service to Orange County Public Schools, our very own Ms. Joey Cadel. It's funny, my hands were shaking, just like on prom night, in front of her father. All right, we do have a strategic plan update tonight. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the board, as you are aware, from time to time, we do periodic updates on our Unitary Status Settlement Agreement report, and then we have a cumulative document report for the Unitary Status Committee by the conclusion of that 12-month period. Tonight, we will have the Unitary Status Settlement Agreement update from our Facilities Department, Chief Facilities Officer John Morris.
Thank you, Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, board members. Just a brief presentation on where we are with the Unitary Status. And the way we set the slides up is we pulled out, as you see on this first one, we actually pulled quotes out of the settlement agreement. So it's easier to relate to what's going on with settlement agreement. We felt like it'd be the best way to present it as we go through the list of schools. So the first one is, you know, the agreement provides the framework for accomplishing that goal in manner that's consistent with applicable legal principles, decisions of the Supreme Court, and is fair, reasonable, adequate, and equitable to all parties. And that's the gist of the settlement agreement. The next slide is, as you can see, we pulled out paragraph two of the settlement agreement. And as I stated before, just so it's easier to track and see that we are indeed, you know, meeting the agreement language as we do our schools. You can see that on this slide that Lee Middle, Orange Center, Evans High School, and Oak Ridge comply with the agreement, with the years they were completed. Next slide is paragraph four. Again, it's a paragraph, the quotes are exactly out of the settlement agreement. And again, we set it up so it'd be easier to track. But you can see from the list of schools there where we are with our schools. You can see that there is a note and a footnote as it pertains to Grand Avenue. We put that in there because of the possibility of what's going on with Grand Avenue and the K-8 and the funding of it. And the funding, as the footnote shows, shows that K-8 project completed in 2017, and that's the footnote showing that expense there. And part of that funding, as you know, is from the Grand Avenue renovation project that's funded.
Mr. Morris, you may just want to point out to the audience or anybody watching at home too, on that slide that we moved up Wheatley Elementary School from 86 to accelerate it because of the issues they were having up there. I just pointed it out.
The next slide is paragraph five. Same scenario, and these are schools, the majority of the schools are not funded yet, and these are schools that, in the settlement agreement, if we get the sales tax extension and we have funding available, then for every school that's not on the settlement agreement, we're obligated to do one in, one in the settlement agreement per year. At least one per year. And that's based on the funding that comes up, depending on whether the sales tax gets extended or not. So again, in the settlement agreement, paragraph five, effective fiscal year 2012 and thereafter each time that the school board approves the commencement of a school replacement, renovation, addition project, other than those enumerated in paragraph four, for this, or in this paragraph, it shall also approve commencement in the same year of at least one of the projects listed in this paragraph. And that's what I just mentioned to you all. The next slide is a slide that you've seen before. The schools have moved around based on their status and their completion. You can see that from the status, kind of lines it up and shows a list. It's easier to follow as far as what's in construction, what's in planning, and the schools that aren't funded again. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morris. Dr. Jenkins, anything further before I go to questions? Okay, Mrs. Gordon?
Well, I really don't have a question at this particular time. I really just wanted to comment with Dr. Jenkins and her staff. This is one of the most, this is one of the finest, comprehensive, easy-to-read report that I've ever seen put out this way. So I'm wondering, well, I guess it is a question. I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, if this is a report, since it's public records tonight, is this something that we can put out on our website? Or can we release, can we release this information? I think Ms. Flynn brought out tonight, or either in Ms. Morris' meeting, it might have been Ms. School brought it out, that the public really wants to see what we are doing and what we are proposing. So I'm wondering, is this is something that can be released, that can go to general media? Because it's very comprehensive, it's very quick, and it's right to the point, and it can stir up questions, you know, for the public in the future as we go along with our project.
We can certainly include it in our board update, our briefing that goes out to the media. It will be on our Unitary Status webpage, and we can put a link on the front page, Mr. Thomas, so folks will be able to get to it easily.
All right, well, I just think that this is one of the finest ones. We saw it, I think the board would just elate it over and the structure in which you've put this together and the framework in which it's in. And another point I think we need to point out, we are not flying blind lead this time as we did in the past with the monitoring committee. Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the superintendent to speak to that issue as to where we are with the monitoring. And I know that we've been meeting, so I think that would be a great point to bring up where the monitoring committee is, since your staff is putting this on the agenda. Where does the monitoring committee stands with this also? And have they seen it? And I know they have, but just give the public an update. Mr. Rodriguez or Superintendent Jenkins?
Ms. Gordon, members of the board. So with each one of these presentations, when we present them, we always present them first to the board so that we can get your input and perfect anything, if there's any questions. We can certainly make sure we address those with you first, and then at our next meeting of the Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee, which I think is scheduled for next Wednesday, we will then give them the same presentation, very, with the new setup, I think, as suggested by you, we have twice the number of participants. There seems to be a new energy in terms of questions, comments, suggestions, so I think we're very pleased with the progress we're making there as well. And I'm sure that Mr. Morris will be asked some questions by that group, so we look forward to that next week.
All righty, well, thank you. And that meeting is open to the public, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so very much, Dr. Jenkins and General Counsel. Mr. Chair?
All right, thank you, Vice Chair.
And Mr. Morris, thank you for a fine report.
You're welcome.
I want to thank Mr. Morris for the report as well. And then I just had a question. Mr. Chair, some of the schools, if you looked at the projected completion dates, were six, seven, eight years down the road. So that's still somewhat concerns me with, in particular, concern for me would be Maxi Elementary in Winter Garden. They have waited and waited, and everything around them has been rebuilt, and it's just problematic, their location. So I know in terms of equity and trying to meet it, I'm hopeful that perhaps we're looking for some property, even if we can't build it for a few years, to find a safer location. Right now, it's really in a very industrial section of town that really has made it undesirable, just for virtue of putting your child, you know, in an artery roadway to get there. So it still concerns me that some of them are just still so far down the list. So I'm hopeful that we can have another conversation about this if and when, and hopefully after August, we can have this conversation again, because some of that still concerns me.
Oh, great point. I don't have any veils queued up to speak, so I just want to echo that. It's nothing like singing in black and white. We were talking about this at a meeting the other day, or the last board meeting, and, you know, I think sometimes folks don't realize that, for example, Maxi 2021, I mean, we're still seven years away if we don't accelerate, so there are quite a few. If we were to put this on our website, Mr. Morris and Mr. Rodriguez and Dr. Jenkins, one thing I would suggest, just so it doesn't confuse folks, and it's just a thought, I'm chewing on it, on slide five, when it says not funded, I'm worried if somebody doesn't understand this will believe that it's not funded permanently. I don't know if we can change that to contingent on sales tax renewal, because that's really what we're saying there. It's not that they're not funded, it's that they're contingent on sales tax renewal. And Mr. Rodriguez, I just wanted to ask you, just so I'm clear in my mind, paragraph five of the settlement agreement, and I haven't read it for over a year and a half, so Mrs. Gordon, correct me if I'm wrong, because I... Gordon, correct me if I'm wrong, because I have a feeling I may be on this. But doesn't it say that for every two schools not in unitary status agreement that we renovate, we have to renovate one on the unitary status? Is that the way it reads?
Yes.
I can go back and look, but I think what it says, if you move one down, you've got to move two.
Yeah, right.
It's if you take something off the list and push it down, you've got to push two that are non-unitary status down.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. Wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Dale.
All right. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, I wanted to echo what Mrs. Moore was saying, and I just, and I want her to hold on, because I'm looking at Ms., I'm looking at Ms. Robinson, and I'm also looking at Ms. Flynn, next to me, Mrs. Flynn and Mrs. Robinson. It took forever to get to Hungerford, not to get, not to get to Hungerford, but it took forever to get to Tangelo Park. It took forever to get to Carver. And even with the planning now and what we're trying to make the best of with the K-8 written in the plan and with Grand Avenue, it took us forever to get there, because you have to remember, this was started, we were on the tail end. And I think the principals constantly wrote us letters, when are you going to get to me? And I don't even believe that Carver believed that we were really getting to them, other than Mr. Morris' staff, meeting with them a couple of, about a month ago, to actually format it, and they still don't believe it. So it took us around 16 years almost to get to where we are right now. And I just wanted the reality to set in and to give you some assurance, when we do what we're going to do based on what our chairman stated in the newspaper and referenced to the continuation of the sale tax. That's why it is so very important, because it will be a little bit faster. I believe it'll be much, much faster now. Mr. Morris might want to speak to that, Mr. Chairman, because of the way that they have been working together. But it took Tangelo Park, they haven't even, we only had one meeting so far with Tangelo Park. And that's the many, 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 many pre-conference planning to tell them, it's your year to get the planning going. So that's really around 14 and a half good years for us. So that's, that's what it looked like, but thank God, we had it. If we hadn't done it then in 2001, we would not be where we are. So we have to look at the future and where the chairman told us where we're going to be projected, and what Mr. Collins told us with 3,000 more students entering the workforce, I mean, entering our school system. It's going to put us a little bit further out there. But with the extension, I think that's, that's going to help us quite a bit. And Mr. Morris may want to be able to address it.
Mr. Morris.
You know, from my standpoint, with facilities, we've got Carver and we've got Tangelo Park that are funded and going through, you know, design right now and into construction. You know, as far as the sales tax extension, hopefully it will get approved. And then we have a lot of conversations with the superintendent and this board on, on the projects that are out there, because I think there'll be a lot of discussion on some movement of some of the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. All right, board members, any further questions on the strategic plan update? Seeing none, Mr. Morris, thank you. Great job, as always. Thank you, Ms. Button. Okay. Let me make some preliminary announcements we make every meeting. Any individual who would like to address an item on our consent or non-consent agenda can do so by requesting and completing a yellow form and handing it in to us. You can get that form from Ms. McGill, which is the lady, who is the lady at the far left-hand side of the dais. And she will give me that form, and when that item comes up on the agenda, I will call your name, and you may testify before us at that time. You'll have three minutes to address the board on any agenda items of interest to you. If you need longer than that, board members are always happy to meet with you after the board meeting as well. Dr. Jenkins, let me at this time go to you on our newly appointed administrators. I think we have one we're all very excited about.
Thank you, Chairman. We do have one to announce tonight. Other, other information we provided with you are actually considered at a lower transfer level. We have one appointment that is a promotion to executive cabinet, that is Dr. Harold Border from EAD with the School Transformation Office to area superintendent for the Southwest Learning Community. Dr. Border.
Good evening, Chairman Sablet, Superintendent Jenkins. I'm humbled, honored, and extremely excited to serve as your new area superintendent. Superintendent Jenkins, Dr. Jara, I'm grateful for your faith and belief in me. I'm fully committed to the vision and mission of Orange County Public Schools, and will ensure that we have high-quality instruction in all of our classrooms for all of our kids every day. Board member, Vice Chairman Kat Gordon, board members Gold, Roach, and Robinson, I'm really looking forward to working alongside you with the schools in districts three, four, five, and six that are affiliated with the Southwest Learning Community. I've been blessed to have tremendous mentors throughout my career in Orange County Public Schools, two of which I'd like to recognize are here tonight, our chief of staff, Dr. Kathy Pope, and Southeast Learning Community Area Superintendent Maria Vasquez. They've helped mold and shape me throughout the years, and I appreciate their mentorship. Also, John Rusnick, want to congratulate you for all your years of service. It's going to be a privilege to follow in your footsteps. Kathy Schuler, this has been a tremendous experience this year working in the School Transformation Office, and a true pleasure to work beside an educator that is fully committed to ensuring that all students have the opportunity to learn in their classrooms at all their schools every day. And I would be remiss if I forgot the most important people. My beautiful wife, Janice, who's also an ESE teacher at Moss Park Elementary, and she provides the most amazing home for our family and allows me to, to do what I need to do with my, my job responsibilities. And to my amazing and beautiful daughters, Annalise, a rising third grader at Moss Park Elementary, and Christina, a rising eighth grader at Lake Nona Middle School, for being the best daughters a father could ask for. And also, they keep me grounded to make decisions for what is best for the education of students every day. I'm truly looking forward to serve as your new area superintendent. Thank you.
Chairman, I would add, Mr. Rusnick does still have a couple of meetings left. That's why I wasn't putting him on the spot just yet. He'll be here just for a little bit longer, but we will certainly miss him as soon as he is eligible. He'll be able to do some things for us on a consulting basis in the future.
Well, Harold, I was sweating there for a minute. I was wondering when you were going to get around to Janice. Mrs. Gordon.
Oh, you know what? I guess I'm excited. We don't want to lose John at all, because he's just been wonderful. And I don't think this is his farewell board, so we won't, I won't kill that. But he's already, John, you've been putting everybody to work, and I think he's been working extremely, extremely hard to try to cover all of the schools in our district, for those of us that work with him. He's worked with Dr. Lawson over the years, and I always tease him that if he can come in District Five and do it, you could make it anywhere. Like, if they say, you could make it in New York, you could make it anywhere. If you could make it in District Five, you could make it in anywhere. And I want to really just say, awesome. And I do want to thank Dr. Borders, because you've been working with us already in our district, and I want to thank you for that through Dr. Kathy Schuler with her transformation. And you've been wonderful. And you've already took on some very heavy, you had some heavy people. I think we had to put them out of a meeting, didn't we? Quietly, they left. When they saw your size, they left. But, but we are so happy to have you. And Dr. Jenkins, we thank you for making, making him an area superintendent. He's had a lot of good training and a lot of excellent people that really knows how to move all of our gifted kids, because it doesn't matter what they're like after our summit today, all of our kids are gifted in some way. And we can't tell them that they are a challenge anymore. We're not going to use that anymore. But I saw you work in my district, and I'm very impressed. And you've just been a big help to us in helping us get our schools up and running and starting, and thank you.
Well, first of all, John, this is not your last meeting, is it? Okay. So we'll wax poetic on you in a couple of weeks, but I'm going to miss you immensely. And I'm very happy for you, but sad that we're going to lose you as an area superintendent this quickly, because you're absolutely brilliant, and we're going to miss you. And speaking of brilliant, Dr. Border, your rise has been nothing short of meteoric, and you should be very, very proud, and your wife and children should be very, very proud. He is truly a superstar in our system, and I think it's important that your kids know that. What you did at Freedom High School when you were there, I'm a numbers junkie, and I look at the numbers and I look at the demographics of all our high schools in particular and our middle schools, and as many of the elementaries as I can. And I know when a principal is standing out and shining with, with a tough population, and that school is still a star in our system because of your legacy. So you should be very, very proud. And Lisa and Janice, usually I have the kids stand up, but I have a middle schooler, you'll probably kill me if I have you stand up. But congratulations again to your father, you should be very, very proud, and your mother as well. We're so proud of them. And normally I say the families can leave, but you're still an executive area superintendent, so Janice can leave with the kids. But congratulations again, we're very, very proud of you.
They came together.
What's that? They came separate. Okay.
I just wanted to, I know that they're not technically, they're moving from position, but I just want to acknowledge one of my fabulous principals who's moving to an executive area director, Dr. Carl Cartwright. Very excited, yes, he's back in the back. Very excited. I'm sad to see you leave Howard, but you've left it in fabulous shape. You've, you've been amazing there, and I'm excited to see what you get to do in the School Transformation Office. We'll be working, because I have several schools in that, so I'll still get to see you. So congratulations.
Well, Dr. Cartwright, I didn't see you sitting back there. I just want to echo that, and I found out yesterday that you had been promoted, and it's wonderful for your career. But I haven't checked my emails today on purpose, because I have a feeling I'm probably starting to get my box full of all the Howard parents upset that they're losing you, which is a wonderful tribute to the job you've done with that school. So welcome to the senior leadership team with Dr. Jenkins. But who has the unenviable task of trying to fill that position? John, good luck. You just went through Blenner Parents, you're about to experience Howard Parents.
Excuse me, we were just...
They worship on the altar of Carl Cartwright.
We, we were just at Brickshire last night, because you're getting Brickshire's principal at Blenner. So it's going all around the district.
We are now, we don't have any public hearings, we are now on our consent agenda. Board members, any questions on our consent agenda? I don't believe I have any speakers. Dr. Jenkins?
We had the amendment.
Oh, you know what? I haven't amended our agenda yet. Thank you. Get a little ahead of myself there. Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do, Chairman. We are pulling an employee with initials TM from the personnel agenda, classified employee with the initials TM for the next board meeting. We also have an addendum to item 1401, that is the sales tax referendum language. There is a strike through and a replacement of the word extend in the agenda title and the recommended resolution with the word renew. The resolution was added after the release of the, of the board book. And then lastly, we have two emergency items. They are both related to an easement for the Altamont Springs Underground reclaimed water main at Wakava High School and Piedmont Lakes. Those are items 1602 and 1603.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I find cause to amend the agenda as suggested. Can I have a motion to do so, please?
Move the approval.
By Mrs. Robinson, seconded by Vice Chair Gordon. Are there any, is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Ms. Moore, did you punch your button on this issue? Okay. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion to amend the agenda, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the agenda amended as suggested. Ms. Moore.
Mr. J, I know we have the, the language for the referendum on the consent agenda, but I was wondering, at an appropriate time, perhaps there might be some comments or some discussion by the board, and was just inquiring where you would like to handle that.
Let's, let's do it right now. Would that be with your approval?
Absolutely.
Because it's, we're on that item on the agenda, we're on consent.
Okay. So then, while I have the floor, I wanted to ask Mr. Rodriguez to give us a little bit of an explanation. That verb, extend, renew, continue, that is really something that has plagued staff a little bit. And I thought, not a comprehensive tutorial on that, but maybe just an overview, Mr. Rodriguez, that would satisfy the public to understand the significance of why we would say the word renew.
Ms. Moore, board members, the distinction there is the sales tax is going to expire on December 31, 2015. The measure that's being placed before the board, before the voters is not to amend the previous one and change it from 2015. If you think of a, a strike through in a legislation before it sunsets, it's not striking through the year 2015 and replacing it with the year 2025. It's actually the same tax but being renewed for another 10 years. And so the use of the word extend or continue could be construed as legally inaccurate. And so therefore, it was suggested that we go with, or I suggested that we go with the word renew instead.
Ms. Moore.
I just think that's a good word, because I think it's really important for the public to understand that we are not asking for anything that they have not already been contributing. And of course, you know, we can't go and ask, you know, all the tourists that come to Orlando how they feel about this, but seeing they contribute 55% of the revenue as far as schools, I know we're incredibly grateful. But I think the renew is a really important distinction for all of us to, to wordsmithing and think about using regularly so that we're consistent, because it's important to understand that we're not asking for something additional or new. It's just renewing, continuing, extending, even though those are different words to explain the situation. I also wondered, at what point, Mr. Chair, when we had the discussion going to be with regards to, because you had made mention of it at your State of the Schools, at what point, so that we're completely honest and above board with the public, at what point do you anticipate that we'll have a discussion about the operating side of the House?
Mr. Rodriguez, the question, I'm sorry. The question was the timing of when we need to take up the resolution on extending the local option millage for operating. Refresh my memory, because I didn't bring my timeline, Ms. Moore, but either late June meeting, or was that going to? I think we decided we could take that up in the last meeting in July.
Either the last meeting in July, or I think you might even have as late as that first meeting in August, just depending on the schedule for the county commission. Just remember that that language has to be on the ballot. The election's August 26, so really Supervisor of Election Cows will not have ballots printed up until sometime in the first week of September. And you need, you do need the county commission's approval before that. So I think we could wait as late as the first meeting in August, which I think is August 12. Or you could do it the last meeting in July, which is probably preferred to give everyone a little bit of time to make sure we get it on there.
Ms. Moore.
I just think it's important, because you brought it up at the State of the Schools, and that this, this setting, in a board meeting, we don't really get to have a lot of discussion. And I wouldn't want the public to think that these decisions are made lightly, and to understand that the process, and they need to have the opportunity to come speak to us. So I don't know if you've gotten any cards tonight. You know, it's been advertised as anyone wanting to speak to this particular issue at all, even though we put it on consent. I'm just, I have concern that we give people the opportunity to voice their, their any concerns or issues or thoughts about the taxes.
Good, good point. We don't have any cards tonight. I will share that with you on the sales tax. And it's certainly out there, it's been widely reported in the press. It seems like, although we have not made a decision... we have not made a decision, it seems like the will of this board is to go forward on the local option millage. Ms. Gould.
You know, there has been a lot of talk, at least in my circles, about the taxes and I have actually gotten a majority support, once they totally understand what the applications of the two pieces are and how they are funded. Those were the two clarifying things and I think it does behoove us to make sure that's perfectly clear, so that they're not confused with two different items coming up and understanding the difference between the capital needs and the operational needs, as well as the sources are a little bit different and understanding those two pieces. So, I think the sooner we can get the message out there as clearly and simply as we can, the better off we are. And I'm hoping it will get people valuing it because they like what they have seen not only happen on the exterior for the image and a great place for it to be, but on the interior, they're really beginning to recognize finally the great work that's been happening for years, but I think it's finally coming to the surface a little bit more with making school cool and being smart, cool and certainly when there's idols out there like Zuckerberger and Steve Jobs and, you know, these very cerebral people who have done a lot of great things with their life and for the world. So, that's a little off the track, but the point being is they get it once it's explained to them and I think the more we can do that, the better off we are.
Good point. All right, board members, any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right. Dr. Jenkins, we had a potential, I thought, speaker on the student discipline issue. Has that person put in a card? Because I don't want them to have the meeting be over. Is there anybody who came here to speak on a student discipline issue?
They're here.
Okay. Y'all need to fill out a card? I'm glad I asked, I wasn't sure. Sir, you need to fill out a card with this lady down here. And Dr. Gordon, can you give me the initials of that student?
ZZ.
ZZ, okay. Then board members, if, does anybody have any objection, I'm going to pull ZZ off the consent agenda, we're going to roll it over to, as we usually do, just so the parents know, we usually pull that off the consent agenda and put it on the discussion agenda. So we're going to pull the matter of ZZ off and I think we'll get through 1601 through 1603 quickly, so we'll make it 16.04. Okay, I don't think I need a motion to do that. Does anybody, anybody have any objection to that? Okay, so we pulled ZZ off. All right, we are back on the consent agenda then. I don't believe I've had a motion yet to approve the consent agenda, can I have that motion at this time? Oh, did I already have that? Okay, it's already been moved then? All right. I don't think it was either yet, Ms. McGill. We moved to adopt the agenda, not the consent agenda. So, Vice Chair, yeah, Vice Chair Gordon moves approval of the consent agenda, seconded by Ms. Moore. Is there any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right. Board members, we are going to, at this time, we're on 16.01. I am going to recess the regular meeting of the Orange County School Board and call to order the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. The first action item is requesting approval of the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated March 11, 2014.
Move the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel, it's been moved by Ms. Cadel, seconded by Ms. Gould. Second, that we approve the minutes from the March 11, 2014 Leasing Corporation meeting. All those in, is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted. The next item is the approval of a resolution authorizing up to $60 million, $250,000 aggregate principal amount of refunding certificates of participation, Series 2015B, and execution of related documentation, including amended and restated Schedule 2000A-1 to the master lease, Series 2015B supplemental trust agreement and forward delivery agreement for Series 2000B certificates. Can I have a motion to do that? All right, it's been moved by Ms. Cadel, seconded by Ms. Moore. The body of the motion is what I just read and to the record, everybody understand it? All right, is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted. Let me explain before I adjourn the meeting in the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation, because it always does pleasantly surprise me how many people watch these at home on TV. When we do bond issuances as a school district, they're called certificates of participation. We do those through an independent entity called the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation, which requires separate meetings and separate minutes. And what we just did there was essentially refinance at a more competitive interest rate to save the district money, a series of our bonds that we call certificates of participation. So if anybody's wondering at home or in the audience, what the dickens we just did, that's what we just did. So, with no further business to address of the Leasing Corporation, at this time, I will adjourn the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation and reconvene the regular meeting of the Orange County School Board. All right. Make sure, give me one second. Mr. Collins, before I move on, do we take care of everything we needed to take care of there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair, I know we had had a previous discussion about this issue. I have been hearing that there were several other districts in the state where that we're starting to experience some financial distress and I think it should be noted or commented here in a full board meeting, that how pleased and proud we are of our finance department that they would even go to these kinds of lengths to save money and keep us operationally sound and, you know, perhaps, just for the record and for this evening, that this might be a good place to just to recount some of the accolades and reasons why this district is financially sound at this time. I don't know if Mr. Collins would be, Dr. Jenkins, just to explain that because, you know, I didn't even realize, I think about all the time about, well, if we didn't have, you know, the half penny, if we didn't have the one mil, if we didn't, you know, we had such a great operations department who would win sterling awards, where would we be with our financing? And I think about other districts and to something I just heard today, with 10 other districts starting to experience some serious financial distress, that maybe Dr. Jenkins could just help reiterate why we believe we're in such a sound financial place.
Dr. Jenkins.
I'm happy to make some comments and then I'll make room for our CFO as well. I think what we have to remember and not become too complacent, complacent is a good word, not too casual about what actually transpired in Orange County public schools because we would have had about an $83 million deficit had our voters not agreed to an additional mil now nearly four years ago, three and a half years ago, to help support operations. That is critical because as it comes to closure, then we would again be facing what we were going to face three and a half years ago when we were looking at a significant deficit, a shortfall of revenue from the state, we would have had to look at serious cuts in services. And what we remind folks of and what we publish every year is, here are the things that we paid for with that $83 million that would have been in consideration for cuts, including over 700 teachers that we probably would have had to lay off, art, fine arts programs that would have had to be eliminated, some of our sports programs that would have had to be eliminated. And so, I don't want anyone to think we are unappreciative, we are very aware that that $83 million would be a huge impact on the level of services we're able to provide to our community and to our teachers. Equally so is the notion of how we've been able to renovate our schools in so many of our communities where they are now jewels rather than potentially eyesores in our communities. Those dollars came from this community as well as our tourists to help make sure that we could have beautiful schools in our communities. Both of those are going to be significant issues and, Ms. Moore, I think you raise an important point, that we need to keep that before our voters, both that we are grateful for it and that it is running out. Mr. Collins might be able to comment. You mentioned recent information, we have had stories in the news about budget cuts, usually around fine arts areas and teacher layoffs and trimming of staff because of budget shortfalls in additional counties. Mr. Collins, you might have further comment on that?
Mr. Collins?
Yeah, right now, many districts in the state are having significant financial difficulties. We're seeing a trend where their financial condition ratios are trending negative and so we've been very, very blessed here in Orange County with the citizens of Orange County approving the special millage. That has completely stabilized our district. And we'll also have to give credit to our board as well, because our board has policies in place that as our rating agencies take a look at the district as a whole, they also take a look at our policies and our investment policies and our reserve policies and things like that, as they're looking at not only the results of operations, but they look at the board policies, they look at financial management, they look at everything dealing with the district and establishing ratings and they looked at, of course, at past performance. So, those are the types of things that are looked at by rating agencies when they're looking at school districts. I will say, like I said earlier, I've been taking a look at several school districts in the state and the trends are not real good right now. Hopefully, as the state resources start to bounce back somewhat and our property tax bases throughout the state start to come back, hopefully most of those districts that are trending negative right now can start to reverse that trend.
Ms. Cadel.
Well, and I just want you to know that Mr. Collins was chosen by the Florida School Boards Association to give a presentation at the conference this week on what school board members should be asking of their finance officer to know whether or not their superintendent is spending the money properly. Is that the gist of it? So, he had asked me a couple of things and because of the experience of being on the audit committee for two years and chairing that and being chairman when the auditor general was doing their three-year rotation, I told him, I said, "If you want, I'll come pitch hit with you, so if they throw you a curveball, I'll be there to say, 'Well, as a board member.'" But I just want you to know, he is recognized throughout the state for his leadership and the fact that we continue to win awards for our financial practices.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. Well, Dr. Jenkins, I just want to echo what Ms. Cadel and Ms. Moore said. And Mr. Collins, thank you, you give us way too much credit. We take your guidance every time I go to a bond closing. If I had to explain exactly what we were doing in those 2,000-page books that we signed, I would be at a loss. What's our current bond rating? AA, minus AA? I know there's different rating agencies.
Yes, it depends on the rating agency and we have an underlying rating as well as a COPS rating and the COPS rating is one notch lower, but we are rated as high as any other school district in the state right now.
And the only reason I ask that question, it's, I think it's important for the audience to know and viewers, that because of our high financial rating with the rating agencies, when we do these refunding of bond issuances and refinancing, we're able to get very competitive interest rates, which saves the taxpayers literally millions of dollars in interest and allows us to build more schools and renovate more schools. And just to echo something that Superintendent alluded to, the millage has allowed us to, you know, by our calculation, preserve the jobs of up to 710 teachers that we may have lost were not for the local option millage, plus we have arts programs in all 187 schools, something we're extremely proud of. Very few school districts of a large nature can say that in the state of Florida and we've been able to preserve our athletic programs as well as our other cultural offerings. So, that's all thanks to the taxpayers of Orange County. So, thank you taxpayers, it's not due to us, it's not due to anybody sitting up here, it's due to the voters of Orange County stepping up and saying public education is important to our community and having a high-quality public school system is important to our community. So, thank you. We are going to go on to item 16.02, I think 1602 and 1603 have to do with some easements and I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Rodriguez, on the Altamont Springs easements. And Mrs. Gordon, I'm going to step away for two minutes, I'll be right back.
Board members, these are two easements, you probably can take them up together as items 1602 and 1603. These are scheduled to be on the agenda for next go-round in June. These have been reviewed by outside counsel and they've actually already been approved by the City of Altamont Springs. The reason they were added to tonight's agenda was simply that the City of Altamont Springs would like to advance that project, I think they have a groundbreaking ceremony of some sort, so they approached Mr. Howard in our governmental relations office. We worked, we got it on Friday, worked with our outside counsel to make sure everything was in order, since it already, the language had been approved previously and had been confirmed by us and had already been approved by the City of Altamont Springs, we suggested bringing it for your approval. This would normally go on the consent agenda without much discussion, but there are a couple of easements that they require our assistance to get their project underway.
Okay. Are there any questions of Mr. Rodriguez on agenda item 16.02, which is the Altamont Springs easement request? All right, seeing none. Mr. Rodriguez, how do we need to word this motion? Just approval of?
Item 1602 and then, and like I said, you could probably take them up together without objection, take 1602 and 1603.
Can I have a motion to do so? It's been moved by Ms. Flynn that we approve agenda items 1602 and 1603, it's been seconded by Ms. Cadel, is there any debate or discussion on that motion, questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted. Reports by the attorneys, agenda item 18. Mr. Rodriguez, do you have any report to make?
Board members, I just have a couple of things to update the board on. First and foremost, I think most of you know, we are presenting this Friday our Law School 101, unfortunately, we didn't realize that was also at the same time you guys, most of you will be at FSBA, but for those of you that are in town and would like to attend, please let us know. It's the first time we've undertaken this, trying to train our principals, put them through about seven different classes with the different professionals in our office as well as risk management, talking about labor and employment issues to ESE issues, et cetera. So, we're looking forward to that and I think our team has worked hard to bring that kind of training and education. We're also appreciative of the superintendent lending us the professionals that they have so that we can give them that kind of legal training, so we'll see how the first year goes. I do want to advise you that at the next meeting, you'll probably have a couple of settlements for some cases that have been around for a couple of years, so I think we're excited that, just the timing of it, nothing magical, but it's, I think it's, I think things are lining up, that some of these cases that have dragged on in my office that I've looked for resolutions are now suddenly, all of a sudden, coming to some resolution. And with the sales tax language, I will just remind you that we will not be using any resources to promote or advocate for the passage or defeat of the sales tax, so our office will be tasked with making sure we monitor any communications, et cetera, so that all information is factual in nature. It doesn't advocate for the passage, it doesn't advocate for the defeat, obviously, but we will continue to do that throughout the summer, as well as watch out for any elections guidance that we need to give our principals, our school members. For those of you in contested races, just remind, remember that, you know, our facilities are still school facilities and we have to limit ourselves and our conduct during candidates, unless they're all invited, really shouldn't be attending as a candidate, but as a school board member, obviously as an elected official, you still have those rights and responsibilities to do what you need to do. And then, we added another board certified lawyer to our mitts this past, a couple of weeks ago. We had two members that have taken the bar, one is awaiting the results, but John Palmorini passed the board certification for education, I think he's in the back. John, stand up. First try, so that was good. And last but not least, just a reminder, we did pick a new date for the board meeting in August, so make sure that your calendars are- in August, so make sure that your calendars are appropriately updated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Dr. Jenkins, report from the superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman. Just two brief announcements. First of all, we are pleased that we completed our annual Superintendent Summit today. Lots of things to celebrate from this past year, and also some direction on things we still need to accomplish going forward. For those who were not there, I want to make sure you get your OCPS Means Success lanyard, which includes a gift card for Barnes &amp; Noble. Every manager, over 900 managers, were told these are not gift cards to purchase something professional, it is for enjoyment, summer reading purchases, both for board members and for our managers. Thanks to our sponsors, we're happy to share that with you. Secondly, you will see the information in your email box. We have plenty. If you left without yours, we have plenty. Dr. Pope will make sure you get one. But the rule is, you can't buy something professional, it has to be for fun, summer reading, because we've encouraged our managers, you've got to have some downtime so you can refuel, because when we hit the road in August, we're going to be running fast. So we want folks to have some downtime and have some summer enjoyment reading, whether it's on a Kindle or an iPad or hardback book.
Can we have a book club?
Secondly, no.
She pointed at that one. You know me well.
Secondly, if I go to Barnes &amp; Noble, I will probably do hardback book as well, Chairman. Secondly, just wanted to share with you, you have the electronic version. We are excited, as the planning goes forward, we talked about it in our budget work session, about our pre-K center for our Richmond Heights facility that will be repurposed as they move into the beautiful New Washington Shores Elementary. We're going to use that site for pre-K and Head Start partnership. We're very pleased, Early Learning Coalition, Head Start, and our own pre-kindergarten and early childhood team will have some resources located there to serve a large number of four-year-old pre-K students at Richmond Heights. And so as interest grows in the community about that, we have put that information out to share with both you and with the general public and the media regarding that pre-K center at Richmond Heights. That's it, Chairman.
Well, Dr. Jenkins, you've had a banner year, and your whole team has, as has everybody in this room, so teachers, administrators alike, thank you for such a wonderful year. I'm already eagerly anticipating September 22. And now I'm eagerly anticipating my new hardcover book from Barnes &amp; Noble. All right. Committee reports, budget, Ms. Cadel?
As promised at the last meeting, we did receive the OESPA budget priorities, and we shared with the Budget Committee that we would be reading these into the record this evening. The budget priorities from OESPA are: base salary greater than the Florida minimum wage retroactive to July 1, 2014; eliminate at least pay grade 2 and probably pay grade 3; lift the remaining ranges to avoid compression of the salary schedule; develop a new salary schedule for technical trade positions; allocations of funds no longer to be based on payroll, but based on the equitable distribution of funds, such as individuals within the populations, like headcount. And then they had requested an additional classified training day. Included in that would be three days for substitute training for any interested classified employee; incentives for transportation and custodial units to decrease absenteeism. And then there was some conversation about improving the dental insurance options, and there was also a request for gap health insurance for all plan options. Mr. Collins received these requests as the superintendent's appointee, staff appointee on the committee. Also, Mr. Howitt was in the room at the time, and these have been shared also with Mr. Howitt. So I had told the President of OESPA that we would write, we would read these into the record this evening. So those are the requests from OESPA, so everyone is aware of them. And it is my belief, based on our conversations, that the majority of these things, both Mr. Collins and Mr. Howitt were aware of, so they have started looking at some of them. And that's the report of the Budget Committee. Also, we will not be meeting again until after the, until after the Governor's Budget comes out. There was discussion, and at the end of the day, Ms. Moore objected to waiting until February, but the rest of the committee agreed that we would wait until after the Governor's Budget came out, because the purpose of this committee is to talk about the priorities of both of our bargaining units as we begin building the budget for the coming year. Because we were at impasse, that meant we couldn't meet until much later in the process. So it's my hope that we will start meeting again in February. We did tentatively schedule those meetings for the fourth Monday of the month for one hour at 3:30, except for the month of May, because that's Memorial Day, so it would move up. But that is the report of the Budget Committee.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cadel. Any questions, Ms. Cadel? Seeing none, where'd Ms. Moore go? Communications report?
She said, it's looked like she said she'd be right back.
Okay, we'll come back to her. Board members, any other committee reports? I think that's pretty much it. Any questions or any issues you'd like me to agenda or us to agenda for future board meetings or work sessions? Mrs. Robinson?
Well, I just have a question, it's not regarding that. Is everybody headed to FSBA this week?
I'm not.
You're not?
And I don't blame Ms. Flynn, is.
Oh, Daryl, you're not going to make it either?
Anybody else not going?
Are you going, Pam? And Barbara, you'll be there? Woody will be there? And I'm assuming Kat's going, and Christine? Do we know if Kat and Christine? Okay. Okay, well, good, I'm going in early tomorrow for the, I know you'll be there too, Joey. So I'll see you all when you get there.
This will, this will be my last meeting that I have FSBA Executive Committee responsibilities. On Thursday afternoon, I will be swearing in the new executive committee, and I will officially be past past president of Florida School Boards Association, with the responsibility of chairing the past president's council, which most of us are pretty tired from being president, so we won't be doing a whole lot. But Mrs. Moore did say this morning that she received a call, and I believe that she's going to be chairing the Advocacy Committee or Vice Chair of the Advocacy Committee. So she's been asked to take leadership with advocacy in FSBA.
All right. All right, Ms. Moore, bring us in for a landing. Sorry to put you on the spot, but as soon as you do communications, I think we're done.
The Communications Committee is embarking on sort of self-study and increasing our skills in social media. So we had a bit of a primer today, and we're going to continue with another session on that, and then work towards building some communication vehicles as we move through the summer. So I thought it was quite successful, and I appreciate all the collaboration with the board members that showed up today. So we will continue onward and upward with that path. Thank you.
All right. Great meeting. Everybody have a great week, have a good time at FSBA, and with that, we are adjourned.